Good morning and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, February 15th, 2018. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you all for coming out tonight. Before we get on to school committee business, I just wanted to take a moment to honor all those that lost their lives in the most recent school shooting in Parkland, Florida. It deeply saddens me, and I'm sure everybody here in this room, to hear of the devastation that our young children and school staff members had to experience yesterday. But to hear of the heroic efforts of the teachers and the other staff members that helped at the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School, it's not surprising, but it's chilling to me. Teachers are faced with a lot of different job duties these years, and not just educating our children, but their mentors, their leaders, and unfortunately now their protectors. So, I don't want to diminish any of the other school shootings that have happened. Actually, there's countless of them. But I just wanted to say that I just have been touched by the stories that I have seen lately in the paper. And it's awful. So my hope is that the community of Parkland feels that the millions of arms, not just around the country, but around the world, are wrapped tightly around them, and hope that over the next few days, weeks, months, years, that they can move past this. But I just wanted to remember them. If we could just have a little moment of silence for them. Thank you.
Very nice.
Okay, so with that being said, I saw that the flags were at half mast, which, there's so many flags in our community, and every time I went by one, it was just like another, you know. But I think that was a nice thing to do. Was that throughout the whole country? Did the President ask for that to be done? Okay, so moving on to regular business, I'll make a motion to approve regular session minutes, actually, we only have safety subcommittee minutes, of December 14th, 2017, as well as acceptance of warrants 34P-18 and 33V-18.
Two more.
Second, any discussion on those? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We don't have Chloe here tonight. Does anyone want to talk about the play? I didn't get to see it, but I'm sure...
Suzanne said it, probably three times, right?
Can you just give us a little bit of a...
It was, yeah, it was one of the best, I thought, because it highlighted not just a couple of, you know, the actors and the singers, but many of them. So it had a lot of characters to it.
Oh, that's nice. And was it a full, was it a full house?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that play has really come a long way since I've been here, and they do a magnificent job.
She's very talented, you know. She manages to get the best out of the students and, you know...
That's Mrs. Lee?
Yes, Donovan Lee. And also, you know, the people that construct the set and, you know, paint it and build it, they do...
It takes a lot of people.
It takes a lot, the lighting, you know.
And how was the lighting? I know we had an issue. Did everything...
The lighting on the stage was fine. It was the house lighting that was a little bit. But today, I got an email that said the, our electrician and Jared Young were able to do something that was, you know, we just don't know if it'll, it won't last forever. I mean, we do need to have some capital improvements with that. We do need to get a handle on that. Because that building, I mean, that space is used by the town, right? I mean, it gets a lot of use. We really do need to make sure that it has the proper lighting. But we're getting, you know, a quote, and, but right now, it's working, and it lasted over the weekend, yeah, so.
Well, that's good. I'm glad. There was no storm, which normally...
No snow, which is usually...
They missed a rehearsal.
One of the nights.
They missed a rehearsal, but they did...
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm glad that they...
It really was outstanding.
Just to get up on that stage, to me, is impressive at that age, but it's great.
Yeah.
And the number of songs that they sang, every one of them was just fabulous, so much talent.
The timing is very hard to deliver. You have to have a timing, and they really did. And I'll stand up. And it wasn't an easy play. It was a very complicated play.
Yes, it was, yes.
And you had to really watch it to sort of pick up all the nuances. But it was really nice, because a lot of the Pembroke kids came, particularly, and I went Friday night, and Friday night had a lot of kids from Pembroke that were there, which was really nice.
It worked really well for the under-six crowd.
Yeah.
My daughters were there, so.
Oh, nice. And they enjoyed it. That's good. We had a nice little ceremony the other day before the varsity game to honor the sponsors and to acknowledge them for the beautiful scoreboards that we have in the gymnasium. They're beautiful. They work great.
Yes, they do.
They work.
They work.
So again, Salem Five Bank, the Georgetown Athletic Association, and Mr. Dave Massey, who's a resident here in town, contributed to that. And then we had our great staff under Mike's leadership, and Mr. Romano, the electrician, which took the time to hang them. But it looks, they look really good. So it was nice to be able to thank them in person. So that was very nice. Do you think that's it for the schools? Trying to get what else is going on?
I know the frolic's coming up.
Frolic's coming up, and we have, and we're, you know, we've been working with some safety things in terms of the mock crash that's being planned. You know, we met today with Georgetown CARES, so there's a few things we're talking about, speaker series.
Is that before the prom? That's what happened?
Yes, that will be on May 2nd.
Okay.
It's a collaborative effort with the fire department, the police department, and the schools, and Conti's funeral home.
I think they're doing it at 8:00.
Yes, I think. We hadn't done that since 2013. So all the students that had seen it, they've gone. And then we're gonna have a debriefing afterwards that will include something to do how it relates to the 40 developmental assets, so...
Which the survey data is back on. We're actually trying to get a community evening when the students, we have 11 students who are going to training to learn how to look at the data.
They went today.
Oh, they went today.
Yes, that's why Tina was not...
Okay.
So to look at the data, and the kids present it to the community.
Yeah. So we just have to get a date and then publicize it, and we're pretty excited about that as well.
Great. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anybody, anything on the agenda?
Anybody.
Oh, my goodness, we have someone. That's wonderful. Welcome. Hi.
We usually don't have anybody. Fred, Red, so this is great, Red.
Now Nancy may not know your name and address, so if you don't mind...
My name is Robert Kelly. I live at 20 Sleder Lane, Georgetown, Massachusetts. Just wanna open with, I got two kids, one kid out of the school, one kid is senior, Nicole and Michael. They got a great education, gotta say. They have a great education. And thanks for all you guys that volunteer your time, you know. A lot of people don't pony up all the committees. Just wanna say thank you on that. Couple of questions. It's on budget and technology. Is, one of the things on your budget thing is on page 16, one of the things, I don't know how to do it, but I'd like to ask, could the school committee, next session, not this budget time, break out the chart to add technology as its own budget category in the pie chart? Because budgets are, technology is a big part of all your schools, and to say, hey, you got the one-to-one, you have the technology of switching, you have networking, you have internet, but it's a big part of your budget, but you don't clearly break it out. So it's, I don't know, how do I ask, or do I have to get signatures or anything like that?
Well, just ask.
On page 16...
Ours aren't numbered that way.
I don't really have a page 16.
I'm doing the PDF from...
Are you looking at the pie charts?
I think it's in D.
Okay.
Sorry, guys, I pulled down the PDF from the website.
And you wanna look at the first one, where it breaks it out?
Right, so could you add that to break it out on that side?
Sure. So where would it be now, Suzanne? Would it be under non-instructional?
Well, it's across all the things, because you have salary, you have cost, you're renewing costs, you have maintenance, and it's across all buildings.
Yeah, so in our tab, it falls under the administration tab, so.
But I think it'll be clear to people, because with the technology coming down, with your one-to-one, phase ones and phase twos coming, I think it's a good idea to help people understand what we're paying for technology. Because that leads me into, and I have a whole bunch of questions or statements, is I went over on my page 30, which is the technology, S0105401 is your category. So I don't know, your blue and white tabs...
So I wanna look at the administration.
It's in administration.
Is...
J, yeah.
On that...
So it's in J, tab J.
Technology, budget support, district-wide.
District, technology. Is it the technology page?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it.
Couple of questions on that. How does the town's IT department look right now? Is, Ben Rubino is your network engineer, IT manager, IT director. What is the breakdown of the IT department? In the past, in the FY16 budget, you had Wes, you had Mary Ellen, you had Kyle, and at the beginning of that year, you had Tom, who left. Were they retired or what?
Yes.
What is the current structure of the IT department?
Want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Okay. So when Wes left, we took the opportunity to restructure. So we felt at that point that we needed more boots on the ground rather than a technology director.
Yes, ma'am.
So what we did is Mike Anderson manages the, oversees the hardware, software, like I'd call it the sort of machine side of the house. And then Colin McDonald, the curriculum director, manages the instructional side of the house. Because they're really two worlds that intersect, but they're two distinctly different things. So what then happened, so we have, so we have the two of them, and then we have Ben, who, so we hired Ben Rubino.
Great addition.
So, very great addition. Ben does all of the network stuff. Colin, you can help me with this too, because you're here.
So who does he report to?
Ben reports to Mike.
Okay.
And Colin. I mean, they co-facilitate the meetings with the tech staff. But day-to-day, Ben would probably more likely be dealing with Mike.
Okay.
Okay. So Ben sort of works district-wide, but spends a lot of his time at the middle high school, because that's where we have the largest need for him right now. Barry Belanger is the sort of the everything kind of network guy, the, you know, helps with technology, keeping the machines running.
Make sure the buses get out, get the calls out.
He's got, he's got, he's got...
Barry is...
Exactly.
A man of many talents.
Barry is a man of many talents, that's correct. So, but Barry sort of manages most of Pembroke on a day-to-day basis. But, you know, it's not uncommon for he and Ben to be working collaboratively on some kind of an issue that might come up. And then we have Barry, also handles a lot of our district-wide data. So Colin takes care of all of the, that's a bear, the statewide data.
That's where we're hiring, you're hiring someone to do that data input, correct?
So what, so on that side of the house, right, so we have Barry, who's Ben doing it.
Yep.
Okay. Wes used to do it.
Right.
Right? So Ben is doing that, however...
Barry or Ben?
I'm sorry, Barry, B and B, Barry, is doing that. But what we discovered was it's, with all of what Barry's trying to do, it was too much for Barry.
Understood.
And Mary Ellen used to do the data.
Yes, ma'am.
Part-time. So what we, what we did is we hired a data clerk, which is a 20-hour, $20-an-hour position, and their job is to, you know, collect the data, sort the data, make sure the data's clean, you know, report to the state. But that falls under Colin. So she, that person reports to Colin.
Is it, it's how many hours a week, or?
It is, what is that? I'm trying to remember. It was 35 hours a week, and it's...
Going school years only.
No, there's days in the summer, because we have a report that's due in the summer. So, you know, it's a...
204 days?
So we, it's, they have to be available to do, work with the data when the data's due, right?
No, I think it's fine. I just...
So they work, that data clerk and Barry work with the district secretaries, because they, they are the initial inputters of the data.
Okay.
So it's all gotta be coordinated. And then, this year, we figured out a way through some redirection of resources and looking at a couple of our teachers to do technology integration. So at the high school, we have Liz Marquette and Sandra Schwarzkopf teaching three periods, and then three periods a day, they do integration with teachers, and they work after school with teachers. To, you know, work with, making sure that if we're doing some kind of, like we're moving to Google. So they're...
Isn't that what Colin does? You just, I just wanna make sure. So that's not the same thing, curriculum integration and integrate, technology integration, aren't they the same?
No, they work for Colin. Colin is also the Director of Curriculum Instruction for the district. So Colin also does all of the work with vertical teams, all the curriculum development, all the AMCAST stuff. So instructional technology is a piece of his job, but it is not his main job.
Okay.
So if you imagine the little org chart, he has the instructional staff reporting to him.
Yes.
And he's got the data.
Okay.
And then over here, on this side, you've got Mike, and he's got the guys that keep the machines running, you know, do the network, you know. What else would, what else does Ben?
The infrastructure.
Yeah, that. So that's how that works.
Okay. My question is, is that on your budget, you show a 46.7% increase in the computer support. Based on the things I understand, and I could be wrong, we had Mary Ellen at about $53,000, we had Wes at $75,000, we had Kyle at about $25,000. That's $150,000 in salary. Why are we increasing $46,000 in salary when we already had budgeted $150,000 in IT salaries in FY16, but in FY19, we're only back up to 94 plus 14? We're $30,000 below a budget that was in 16. Where'd the money go? I mean, you have...
Where did the money go?
You mean, really?
You mean for technology, Red?
Oh, salary, in the technology group. You had Mary Ellen, you had, you had Wes, and you had Kyle.
So when we restructured Wes's position, we had Mike, Mike and Colin get a stipend to do the additional responsibility. They don't get another whole stipend, the whole salary, they get a stipend. And then we hired Ben. That's where the money went. That's where Wes's money went.
75, so Wes and Kyle, because Ben really replaced Wes and Kyle.
No, Ben didn't.
Where did Kyle, where did Kyle go? You had a, you had a network guy with Kyle. They left relatively at the same time, three months. So that's $90,000. So you're telling me Mike Anderson, Colin, and Ben split $90,000 plus Mary Ellen's $53,000? Where did the money go?
You know, I'd have to, I'd have to follow what you're thinking, Red, because I lost you a little bit. All I can say is that what we did with Wes is we thought we'd get a better value by dividing it up, okay.
I'm not questioning that. I just, I'm following the money is going, hey, I got a 46% increase when I had 100...
But that's compared to the revised FY18.
But, no, but you gave me the ability on FY16, you have $76,005. That was Wes's salary. In the GMH High School, you had $50,250. That was Mary Ellen's salary. So there's 30. You don't show Kyle's salary. Where's the money?
I think back in 16, the money was more spread out throughout the district.
No, but no, those people that were employed here.
We had reduced, the most recent...
I know, but it wasn't in this technology budget. It was spread out throughout the school. It wasn't...
No, they, you broke it down. You had, you went to the town meeting and asked for $75,000 for an IT director. We gave, the town gave it to you. You had Mary Ellen, who was already on salary for a long time, she's a great employee. And you had Kyle, the FTE got shrunk in 16.
I was gonna say that.
But it went from 35 to 23. It didn't go away. He just didn't gain summers. I'm just trying to say, they deserve the money. I'm not questioning Colin, I'm not questioning Mike Anderson. But I see an increase in a technology budget that, I spent, the town has budgeted this, I understand shuffle.
Is the...
Where's the money?
I think the other, the other thing that we did, when we did the technology integration at Pembroke, Mary Ann Fravel is the technology integrations specialist there. We replaced her with a tutor. So the person who, who does the classroom instruction, which is like your keyboarding, you know, doing some of the Microsoft Office kind of things, we hired her. That might be what you're, that might be...
It still doesn't add up. You had a person, the salary. What I'd like to know, can I get, I know I can't ask on the school side, the boys, where's the money? What's the salary breakdown in technology across those?
I think that we need to, I think we need to get that to you, Red.
That would be great.
Yeah. We will be happy to do that.
Because I'm, I'm just looking...
That's all public information.
No, it's, Carol...
We have no problem with it.
In town meeting five years ago, you told me through the lawyer, I can't have that information.
If you're, what do you, if you're looking for who's doing what task, there's no problem.
And their salary.
Yeah, salaries are public information.
In town meeting years ago, I asked this same question, and you went to the council, and they said, no, schools don't have to tell you that.
We don't, I'm telling you, we're happy to tell you that, Red, because it's public information. But it, but I think you have to be careful about the, you know, the one-to-one correspondence. You just have to understand what we're trying to do to structure, to get the work done.
No, I think they're doing, I think tech's doing great. I just want that. The other question on, on budgets...
Well, in part, just, so part of the question might be answered, I mean, if you look through these books, through the years, this technology budget, what it includes, may have included very different things four years ago.
No, it did. It included salary. I'm not talking one-to-one, I'm not talking hardware. That changes. I understand the iPads, I understand firewalls, I understand that tech. But I'm just looking at salaries that we've budgeted, 75 was approved for Wes in a town meeting, and then all of a sudden Wes leaves. I understand it got shuffled, but where did the 75,000? I understand Colin got it. I understand Mike got it.
And we hired Wes. I mean, we hired Ben.
And we hired Ben.
When we hired Ben, six months later, six months, where did the money go?
But remember, the money that was in the budget was .6 for Kyle. It was not 1.0 for Kyle. We hired Ben at point, at a 1.0. So there's a, there's an increase there, right? Because we needed him at a 1.0.
Absolutely.
Okay. So let us, let us get the information. Maybe we can make that more clear.
The other question is for the school committee is, right now, we do, they do a great job. But you guys are having, Google is a great product. I saw nothing in the budgets explaining that. Right now, Google's free, Google Classroom. In 19, they're expecting to raise between 50 cents to $1 for every student, and $1 to $2 for every administrator. Have you guys budgeted this $18,000 increase in FY19?
We're not, we don't have any evidence that that's happening. When we looked into it with Google, that wasn't on the table. So unless, unless there's something we don't know about, Red, that maybe you do, because it's your technology world, you know, we, that's not how we understand it, based on talking to the representatives from Google that we've been working with. We're not expecting that.
You're not expecting anything?
We're not expecting a, we're not expecting a fee per student to transition to Google. We're operating...
Not to transition, but their maintenance. Because Google, years ago, had free for business. That went to $10 a year, or $5 a year. They're having the same budget model to go for schools, because it's customer inertia. Once you're on Google, and it's like, I can pay a dollar, or go back to Microsoft, you'll be like, I'm gonna pay a dollar. I just wanna make sure that...
We're not, we're not anticipating that, Red. So if there is, if that is the case, then we have to know that. But that is not our understanding for next year in the budget.
It would also be a bunch, a dollar per student?
They're planning 50 cent, they haven't set the number.
Per, what's the time for that?
Per student.
Per student, per...
Month.
Oh, it is per month.
Right, they're gonna try to say be around the $5, $10 per student per year.
Right.
They understand that they will have very little resources in the summer, so that's why they're around the $5 mark. Teachers are year-round to that, but that's their plan, because it's an unsustainable model on their side, and they did the same thing in the business model. Oh, it's free forever, and then it's, hey, great, it's not. The other question I have is your, your hardware cost is, is there a way to get, you have hardware and equipment, and then maintenance support of $90,000. Can we, can I ask for a breakdown of that? Like, because right now, you have a 3% rider on technology hardware?
Yes.
The industry is showing it's gonna be about 5.5% because of chip value. It's, you're low.
We'd love to be...
We'd love to be at 5.5%.
No, but I'm just saying, you're budgeting three, but you're gonna get hit with five. You know, so that's a great budget, and, you know, I understand that. But what happens when you go to buy that 22 PCs, five notebooks?
Well, you know, Red, we work within our budget, right? So unless, you know, we sometimes can't do everything that we want to do in the year we want to do it. And so it just might be that, you know, something that, like, several years ago, we were gonna do three labs. And when it push came to shove, we couldn't do three labs. So we had to wait and do the lab another year. It's just, you know, we anticipate as best we can, but there, you know, the school committee and superintendent have to put together a budget that maybe the town, you know, can work with. And, you know, and spread our money the most effective way we can across all departments, so.
At last week's meeting, we actually said that, that I feel like we're putting in percentages that we know are not good enough, like our special education and things like that. But we have to present it as we, you know, if we present a budget that we think we, or we know we need, it's gonna be, I think, we're up to, like, close to 8%. You know, sometimes...
So, but, I understand, I can't appreciate all the numbers you have to go through. But it's just, when you look at it going, okay, you're not gonna get what you're valued. So it's like, it's like, hey, I want a Mercedes, but I can afford a Toyota. Great, go buy a Toyota, you know. So that's my concern, is looking at the numbers. I mean, just video cards alone are off the hook because of cryptocurrency. I'm concerned that the hardware and the maintenance support is not there. And the last one I have a question for is, and it's tough, and I know teachers have professional development days, but for Ben, and Mike, and Colin, in the technology, there's no training budget. And...
Oh, in the technology budget, yeah.
It's lifetime learning. You know, Ben needs to go to school during, you know, to learn new stuff. Because from the cyber attacks, it's one line item that was glaring, that there's training in every other department, but there's no training in technology, is that, you know, how do you keep him up to date if we don't fund training? Or how do we make sure Colin and Mike, Mike Anderson, if there's no training?
Well, Colin, Colin oversees the entire professional development budget for the schools. And so that budget isn't just for teachers. You know, that budget, it can be used in terms of whatever people need and want. So, and we do have money in, in, in some of the, to do upgrades to, what is it, some of our, I'm thinking, what's the word? I'm thinking of the maintain, maintenance of things like our, oh...
Our licenses.
Licenses, right, right. And so we have, if we have somebody who needs to go to training, that's where we go for the money. We go to the district account. We have never identified professional development dollars in the technology budget. Just, they just don't budget it there. Doesn't mean we wouldn't train people if they needed to be trained. We just don't say it comes out of this budget. It's in the district budget.
The money is found.
The money is found. And sometimes what we'll do is, you know, if there's, you know, a one-time expense in school choice, or there's, you know, we try to, we'll find the money if we can, but if we can't, we're, again, we prioritize, Red.
But that's one of the things is...
That's what we do. I mean, we have no choice.
I mean, yeah, I mean, same way, technology, I believe, should be broken down as a budget grouping, is you need to have training.
Yes.
And it has to be, hey, this $5,000 in training, it's assigned to this department, that, and no offense to any other department, it's like, and it's great how you guys play the game. You know, you play the chess match. Oh, I got $10 over here, I can do this, I can send you this training.
That's about what happens.
But, you know, but, you know, we need to have a budget to say the truth, to say, hey, Ben, hey, Mike Anderson, and, you know, I'll use Colin as the, and the other people to train the lady that's coming, or gentleman who's coming in to do the data entry. If they look at their job and say, hey, great, there's no training, and they get a better offer somewhere else with training, you've wasted all your time hiring a great guy like Ben, because he now has training. But if you see it in his budget line item, he goes, hey, I'm gonna go to training this year.
Yeah, we do get a lot of free trainings too, Red. You know, we can do some of our own in-house training. For example, Barry works with the people at the state. They, the new data person, that's where that person's getting the training. It's getting a boots-on-the-ground, on-the-ground training for people who actually know the work, and have, you know, provide technical assistance for free by picking up the phone and walking them through. That's...
That's not training.
Well, no, I see that as training. It's not IT infrastructure, networking, that, I mean, that's a very different training.
That's different.
This is how to compile the data, how to format it the right way, and how to submit it into the state system. So it is, it is training, it's training for a specific purpose to get the job done.
Right.
Two different...
Yeah.
One is, one is job function, one is training, 100%.
Right.
I think, and I think if we wanted to fund our budget the way, the way you're... I think, and, um, I think if we wanted to fund our budget the way, the way you're suggesting, which I frankly agree with.
Right.
What it would mean is that as of today, we would say, well, to do all of these things, we need to put positions on the table. And so do we teach kids in classrooms or do we have technology and say, we want the Cadillac and we're gonna fight like crazy for the Cadillac? But come January, we're gonna make a decision on, well, maybe we are getting the Toyota. I would love to put in the budget, but it's not realistic because every dollar that we put in technology, we're taking out of the classroom. And so it's.
But everything, your one-to-one initiative for the last three, I'm gonna put technology in. So you're gonna, oh, it's in the cloud. I, I'm a bit, I, I, my kids, like I said, they got a great education, but you're like.
For sure.
Hey, here's the technology, yeah, but we won't support it. So what happens?
But it has.
No, but you don't budget for it, it's not supported. I mean, it's not. I mean, right now, you're saying, oh, okay, great. If this problem happened, I'm a consultant. I have made money on your school. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But if you don't have the budget in there, so you don't have to hire a me and train Ben more, or train Mike Anderson more, or train the right people more, then the education in the classroom is, great. Here's a question for you. Technology, you're all a one-to-one initiative. You're using Google. What is your plan for the three to five days a year that the internet will be down based on the FBI studies that denial of service? Do you have a plan to do? What do you, what's your, what's your curriculum plan when the internet's off in the classroom?
I, I think the easy answer to that is they don't, they're not sitting on their iPads six hours a day. The iPads, it's adding.
It's an enhancement. It's not instruction, a hundred percent.
Right, but you have to have a plan. You have to plan for the technology. If something breaks, you have to have Ben ready to fix it. You're saying, great, okay, I might have the budget. I just think, you guys do this much better than I do, but I'm looking through the budget. My kids are moving out of the school. I just wanna defend that, hey, you got good people, you got good stuff.
We do.
But it will be Pembroke all over again. You guys didn't have the maintenance. You ended up tearing it down and building a forty-two million dollar building. Maybe if you did a little more maintenance, the building would have lasted a little longer. So. So that's what I'm just concerned is on the technology, these numbers aren't matching. My last question is, can you get asked for a breakdown of the different budget items for, hey, you have thirty-three thousand dollars for hardware, you have thirty-five thousand dollars maintenance? What is that?
Oh, like these line items, you mean?
Yeah. How do you get that? What are, what, what's in that number? Like, you know?
Oh, like have one of these, the, the.
What are the maintenance, you know?
The sub-lines.
Should you just email you guys and ask, hey, what are the numbers?
Yep.
Cool.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Jen.
We're all the same team. If we had the money, we would have every dollar.
Well, I mean, as it is, we, you know, we're making people pay for their iPads. I mean, that breaks my heart, you know, but, I mean, we, we had to do something, right? And that was the most creative thing we could think of to do.
You could get free services.
I have.
Yeah, he, he has.
You have thousands of dollars of free services for these, so, yeah. I think I've, I've been there, done that. Uh, so.
Red has given us a lot.
Yes, I have sent bills when it's necessary, but, um, but it's one of those things is I just wanna make sure is that, as moving down the road, is that it doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you're sitting on old technology, the exchange server, the old equipment, because the conversation was never had. So Nicole's a senior. I feel more comfortable asking the question and saying, hey, great, you need to move these forward or it's gonna break again. Cool. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Thank you, Red. Thank you. Thanks for taking the time. Okay, uh, Tyler, do you wanna come on up? Please.
Hey, Tyler, how are you?
Field trip again. Yes.
Yeah, I think this is my fifth time now.
I know, I was gonna say, it's an annual event.
Yeah.
Great. Let's went to Canterbury Lake, right?
Yeah, so if you're, if you don't recall, um, I take the students to be evaluated at the music festival that happens in the springtime. Um, and as a part of that, we like to, you know, celebrate our successes. Um, and we take the kids to Canterbury Lake, so that's the reason for my presence today. Um, because it's technically out of state, um, coming and asking for permission for us to go again. Um, it's changed a little bit this year on how I'm setting it up. Because fundraising has been a little bit on the lower end for the music parents this year. Um, they aren't able to cover the one-hundred percent cost, which is what is usually covered.
Yeah.
So we decide, I decided to make it a part of the enrichment program. Um, and that's something that's already going on. Had Pembroke and students pay, um, a user fee to be able to take the classes. So what I decided to do is to open it up to the fifth graders as well. It's usually just been a sixth grade or at the old Pembroke, it was just a fifth grade thing. Um, but because it's enrichment now, I decided to open up to more kids, so I have fifth grade and sixth graders that are gonna be able to be in it. Um, so these will be all students that have had at least, uh, in their second year of instruction on their instruments. Um, so because of that, all the money that the kids are paying for, through the enrichment program, uh, will go directly to pay for the trip. So our cost, the cost of us to go is dependent upon the kids. So there's a number attached to each student. So it depends on how many students are registered for the festival is how much we have to pay.
Ah, okay.
So it ends up being a money in, money out situation where it's, the enrichment program is taking care of the funds and then they'll write the check for the music festival.
So you're saying, Tyler, it's sixty dollars a person, but what you're saying, that could vary. That it could not be sixty, depending on how many kids you get.
It's actually fifty-five from the music festival for that. Um, we included an extra five dollars in order for, um, to cover like the cop, you know, the, the music. And, um, we were thinking about doing the transportation, but the music parents are going to be helping us with the transportation. So the actual price for one kid to go is fifty-five dollars. And so my thinking was that the enrichment program is sixty. So I figured this would be the best way for us to do it.
And you have thirty-five students?
I don't have an exact number yet. That's an estimate.
Okay.
Um, but I've been talking with the students and asking them and the parents. I've been kind of letting, they know that it happens around this time of year, so I've been trying to get the word out. Um, but I won't know for sure until the registration ends. And our goal is to have it done a week after February vacation. So we can get on the practices, cause they'll meet once a week before school to practice and that'll be for March, April, and then the festival's at the end of May. Um, so I don't, that's a ballpark because I have about, uh, thirty-five students in fifth grade and I have twenty-one in sixth grade. Um, so I just, I just kinda guessed in between.
So what if you don't get the thirty-five? That's what I was trying to get at. Does that adjust the fee?
Well, I have not, um, officially filed paperwork for the music festivals, so that hasn't affected us at all.
Okay.
Um, I won't do that until I know an exact number because it's harder for, it, at some point, I think it's soon, we can't deduct numbers from our, and we'll have to pay it no matter what.
Got it.
So that's why I have not, well, plus I have to have approval too. Um, I haven't filed any paperwork with the music festival. But I've been, I've been doing it for five years, so I just, they're just an email away and just have to say, you know, save a spot for us. I'm, I'm working on the kids and all the paperwork and things like that.
What's the chaperone ratio?
Um.
What are you expecting?
Well, we get, uh, two complimentary tickets for chaperones, including myself. Um, and I usually have about, I usually have three chaperones. Of course, these are elementary kids, so more parents end up coming anyway. But I have, I do, um, one chaperone for every eight to ten kids.
Yeah, consistent, yeah.
So, and the kid, and it, I mean, the numbers aren't usually like, you know, a ton of kids. So three chaperones is a lot. I mean, is enough for us. And then plus, parents will come and then also other family members will come too. The kids just get really caught up in, whose group am I gonna be in? I'm like, it's okay, you guys are all gonna be there together. Um, I usually don't have a problem getting parents. That's why I have, I didn't include exact names because I.
Oh, yeah, you don't need to give us names.
Problems finding chaperones.
There's obviously no way to know about fundraising the music parents for next year, but is it, is the expectation that it would stay as an enrichment?
Um, I think I'm going.
Program instead of a?
I think I'm going to, um, because it's been able, I've been able to open it up to more kids, um, to be able to go. And I wanted to have it more focused on, um, the ensemble part, which I don't always get to do in the sixth grade because I see the kids individually. So making it a part of the enrichment program, I get to see the whole band all at once. Um, and it really just helps with the ensemble part, where having to listen to one another. And I'm gonna be getting the kids that are, you know, going to practice their parts because they're invested in it and their parents are invested in it. Um, so I'm gonna get the kids that, you know, really wanna be there, really wanna practice and have that ensemble experience that we don't always get to have in an elementary school.
That makes sense.
So I do plan to keep it as a, now, as an part of enrichment.
Now, just one thing that I'm noticing, and this is not on you, but when we approved the out-of-state, like the international and stuff, is this the different form?
No, it's the old form.
It's the old form?
Yeah.
Yeah, so is the new form available to?
It's, it should be. It should be. Um, let's just make sure, cause I believe that we sent those out.
Yeah.
Yeah, but let, but let's look at that.
I think that was just in the transition.
I, I think so. I think so.
And I could, and I found, I found one that was through the policy documents, but it's not like the format to print it.
Yeah. So we'll, I'll write myself a note on that. About to check them out. Make sure schools have a new pair.
Yeah. Okay, well, it's always a fun trip. I know that the kids have a great time.
Yeah, um, last year we ended up going, we got a gold medal.
I was gonna say, you got the gold last year.
It's just always nice to give the kids, the kids work so hard and they don't, and they don't ever put it into perspective until we do something like this.
Right.
Yeah, you really do work hard and I feel like it also goes, you know, the quality of our music programs in the district too, which just kinda has that, you know, that ring to it, like, you know, the students have worked really hard. They went and performed in front of judges and put themselves out there.
And then it prepares them for that trip when they go to, um, Six Flags, but the, I forget the school that they go to right before that where they perform.
To Holyoke?
Holyoke, yeah.
Yeah, we, ours is a similar situation. So we, I don't know, I don't know if I, but we go to Methuen Memorial Music Hall.
Yeah.
Which was a nice hall that we played in last year. And so that was, that was a pretty cool experience. And then the bus ride is like five minutes away from the park, so.
Yeah.
It's a really, I feel like it's a really good elementary trip. It's not too intensive. It's not so, so much pressure. So we just end up having a little bit more fun with it to get the kids to perform and then.
It's a great experience.
Park. And Canterbury Lake is perfect. It's not too big and.
Right. No, it's fun.
Of course, they don't do the water parks.
I think it's my favorite park.
Yeah.
Mine too.
The kids are still amazed that I, like, you ride the roller coasters? I'm like, absolutely.
Lost in tea party.
Yeah. No, it's good for the kids to be able to see their teachers in that environment. Yeah, being real people and they're not just.
Wearing a t-shirt and shorts.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the, um, proposed trip to the Great East Music Festival as well as Canterbury Lake Park on Friday, May twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteenth.
Second.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's great. Have a good time. I look forward to seeing the gold medal this year too. No pressure.
No pressure. I was gonna say, there's no pressure. That's funny, yeah.
Okay, um, I don't remember even seeing the draft calendar in mine.
I saw it.
Oh, it's a beauty.
Nice. It's pretty, isn't it?
Beautiful.
It's awesome.
But I thought I would have another one in the packet.
Here, Barbie.
Oh.
Barbie, here.
No.
Take mine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. It wasn't in there. You showed it to me when I was there, which I appreciate and I love it.
Well, Margaret, Margaret.
Yeah, it looks great.
Shared, uh, Trit, the one they do is in Triton. And then Nancy just made it happen. We, we met.
Yeah, it looks great.
Easy to read. Well, that was our goal, right? Cause that, the other one was not. And we liked the color code. Um, so.
It looks good.
Yeah, it, it, so far, it has really come out nicely. Um, okay, do we wanna talk about it? Sure you wanna talk about it?
Let's talk about it.
Let's talk about it. So.
So you're gonna start after Labor Day?
Well, well, we're gonna make that decision, Suzanne. Yes. Historically, that is, historically, personally, I, I would prefer a little, something a little more consistent. But historically, if, if it's been, Labor Day's been the first, second, or third.
Right, it start after.
The committee has decided to start after. The fourth was last year and remember, we said, uh, which way should it go? And you guys went before, right? We went before.
Right.
If it's the fifth, sixth, or seventh, historically, the committee has gone before.
Right.
So it's really up to you. Um, but we anticipated that you were going to, uh, want to go after. Given that it is.
That's quite an assumption.
It is quite an assumption. But I'm just saying it like it is.
We might just change this all up.
You might change it all up.
I'm just thinking based on, sorry.
I'm okay.
But I know the cost of ink.
I'm okay with going earlier. We've only run it off for the group. We haven't run it off for the masses. We haven't run it off for the masses yet.
Okay. So again, going after.
Yes.
Labor Day, the la, the proposed last day of school is the seventeenth. And with snow days, it's a possibility of it being the twenty-fourth.
Correct. Yeah.
Which I'm not sure why we put that on there because if we have.
We're required to. The state tells us that we have to.
Because if we have ten snow days, we have, we make up ten days, right?
You have to make them all up.
Right?
So if we do five or less, we don't make them up.
No.
I mean, we do.
But that's the thing, like, like Cheryl said, yeah.
It doesn't matter. The days have to be made up.
The state requires you to do five.
But if we had ten snow days.
Well, we'd go on vacations probably. Because you can't, you can't go, you can't go af, you can't go after July one.
Right.
Okay. But the days are still, still have to be made up.
My favorite rule, it's all about the budget. Cause you can spend FY old.
So. Will there be any talk about, um, what are they calling it?
The blizzard bags.
The blizzard bags.
Certainly, we can talk about the blizzard bags.
That's a whole nother topic.
I think that's a broader topic and I think that has to engage other people. Because while it's a really good idea, there's, there's a lot that you have to get agreement on, you know, like, so. Some people, if you're a classroom teacher, you have work to do on snow days. If you don't have kids in a classroom, you don't have any work to do. You get a free day. Um, you know, what qualifies as a qual, as a good activity to do? It, you know?
That would replace a full day at school.
Would replace a school. And teachers are supposed to be available if teach, if students have questions, that they can email them. So you have to negotiate that with teachers. Some places say you have to use three days before it kicks in. Right? So it's really to avoid having to deal with.
Excessive days.
Yeah.
Are there any districts that are successfully using?
You know, there's a lot, there's, there's New Hampshire districts that do it. Um, Bill Rica, uh, did it, cause I have talked to the superintendent there.
Well, Burlington.
Burlington. Burlington, that's the one I'm thinking. Burlington.
But I don't know if they do it anymore.
Well, so Wakefield does it.
Okay.
And, um, I actually went on to see. And there's certain things like you can't get into because, like, if you're in Mrs. So-and-so's class, you can click on it and then you, you might have to log in.
Yes. I'm sure you would have.
But I think what Wakefield presents is definitely worth looking at.
Yeah, so we can look at it.
In terms of quality, um, I don't know, I think it is definitely worth investigating.
Yeah.
In Burlington, the, they do not do it anymore. They did for a few years. They didn't have a problem with the middle high school. It was all computerized. They had a problem at the elementary school where, like, less than thirty percent of the kids did work.
Right. And then you have to chase them. And then, you know.
And then.
But then that would be graded as like a zero, is if they were in class and not doing the work.
Yes, but then you have parents who say, wait a minute, this is my family time. I'm my, I don't, I'm not the teacher. I, I'm not gonna, you know, can they, I'm not gonna battle with my child over this, that, or the other thing. So, you know, it, you have to, I think if we're gonna seriously look at it, we should have a committee of people and we should seriously look at it. I don't, you know, I don't think that's the answer to the, to the calendar.
I think it is worth looking at. We've talked to, to, um, Joe Patella about it, the superintendent and I, a few times. And then he also brought up, you know, different things like the superintendent was saying in terms of, um, you know, contractual obligations and things like that. But I, I do think it's worth looking into. And I know it's become, um, it's on the news the last couple of nights because of the New Hampshire districts that, uh, the new ones that are taking, that are partaking in it. Because what they were doing is they were adding like fifteen minutes a day, fifteen minutes to each day. Um, and they turned, that was a contractual issue as well.
Yes, it is.
So I think it would be really good to get a group of like parents and teachers and to see if it's something that we could.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
More. So can I do, Suzanne? We'll do that.
Um, I guess the other thing that just occurred to me, um, about starting before Labor Day is potentially, if, if we start before Labor Day.
Just the, next year?
And I'm, I'm just saying, in general, um, you may have some kids who haven't turned five yet before they enter kindergarten. So say you started, I mean, it's, it's days. But if we have a cutoff date for entering kindergarten as August thirty-first. kindergarten as August thirty-first, if we start on.
Yeah, the twenty-ninth, which we have.
You know, or the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
They haven't even had their birthday to be five yet, to enter kindergarten.
Hmm, has that been an issue?
I, I mean, I.
Yeah, it's valid, yeah.
I mean, if you, if your birthday, I guess I would say if your birthday is before September first, you know, you come.
Well, right, I mean.
You know, it's, it's if your birthday's after September first, you don't.
That's the rule.
August thirty-first.
Well, and, yeah. To me, it's just an interesting.
It is, and it's a nuance I had not thought of.
You know, because I know a few students where that happened this year, and that they were like August thirtieth, or thirty-first.
Oh, funny.
Yeah. Whether it makes a difference or not, I don't know, but I just thought it was interesting.
Yeah, that is interesting.
To think about. Luckily, this, luckily, this calendar, I don't think will go before.
Right.
Labor Day.
So, you know, so.
We would have to address that if it came up.
Well, you know, if you went before Labor Day, you'd be, you'd be going, probably, you'd be having the teachers come in on August twenty-sixth, you'd have kids come, uh, wait, you'd have kids come Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then you'd do the Friday off. Like, like you, like we do typically.
Mm-hmm.
You'd pick up three days, isn't it?
Yeah, it's that, it's, it's a swing of three days, yeah. So, anyway, we're happy to change it, but that's, we anticipated that that was be consistent with what, you know, the committee's done in the past.
Yeah, I'm not a four, I, for Labor Day, and this early, right?
Yeah.
Well, and with Labor Day that early.
Yeah, right, it's, right, right. Um, so, I know Michael had mentioned before, like, this calendar, it did seem like every month we had, we didn't have like a full.
Like, full weeks of school.
Yeah.
And looking.
Looking at this, it's kind of the same.
So I, there are forty, well, there are forty-three weeks of school, forty-three weeks between school starting and school ending, so that does include vacation weeks, but there are sixteen weeks that are not full weeks. So it's, it's, one out of every two and a half or three weeks is not a full week of school. Um, which I know, and this is speaking solely about my kindergartner, but it's, there's continuity of, of schedule, you know, it's, I haven't been to music class in three weeks because we haven't had a Wednesday in three weeks for a holiday, or a PD day, or whatever it was. Um, I guess I'm, I'm mindful of.
Is it's a half-day, you mean, Margaret, is that what he's talking about?
Well, there was a half-day, or there was a community gather, there was something, I don't know what it was, but I remember there was, there was a, three weeks in a row that Emily didn't have, I guess it was music. Um, it might be a different day, it might be off on my days, but she just hadn't been into that class because of the way the calendar was. Um, which I get that, you know, she has computers on Monday and library on Tuesday, I, I get that schedule, but it's tricky when you're missing, there, there's already a lack of continuity when you're going to art class once a week, and then you're not going for three weeks in a row, where you're here this week and not the next week, like, it's, it's.
Well, and that happens too with the Monday holidays.
Not, yeah, which is less controllable.
Right.
For sure, but, so that's my, my concern is, is the lack of sort of five-day weeks consistency.
Yeah, like, we were, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Well, like, I was looking at November, and November really only has one full week of school, and I didn't, and obviously, we have, we have two holidays that month, we, we have.
And you have an election, yeah, and you have Election Day, which is the sixth, that's why that's, that's why. That's why, that, again, we don't have to work with the town on that, but that's, that's what the town has asked us to think about.
All right, that's.
And it does affect our ability to run our PE program, and affect our specialist schedule, because they use our gym. So, that's why, that's why you see it. November is always, I, I don't care what you do, and November is a choppy month anyway, but that's why we didn't have any Election Day complications this year, but next year there is, I think it's the midterm election, right? So, yeah, so.
I do like not having school on its election day.
So that's the, the reason for that, and because of the way the, what do you call them, the terms, you know, marking terms, and that's the yellow, right, which is the half-day parent conferences. And then the purple ones are school committee, right? So.
Yes.
And then, and then we have the half-day before Thanksgiving, that's kind of a.
Right.
Tradition.
For the elementary conferences on the twelfth, that seems a little bit late.
Which one, which, which, uh, December?
December twelfth.
So, Margaret, do you want to comment on that?
It seems late. Late. Like, usually it's the week, well, actually, this year it was late as well.
You're starting after late, you're starting.
When is it?
December twelfth.
Oh.
I don't know, we, I know Margaret counted the number of weeks, so that.
About fifty-seven days.
We, we have been doing them in December, the last couple of years.
Usually like that first week.
First week.
Well, again, I'm trying to avoid, we just get back, you know, I mean, trying to avoid getting back from Thanksgiving, and then.
Yeah.
Right, well, you know, having it down. And the other thing, or the other way of looking at it is, teachers may not, they've felt, or some have felt that being that late, they can't even start thinking about their holiday until after their report cards and conferences are over, which, I don't know, I mean, I guess it's six and one half dozen a dollar, you know. So are you suggesting that maybe they would want to have them?
That December fifth, and then would that give you enough, would that give them enough time in the terms to make their, I, and I don't, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, it's hard, I usually give them, once report cards, once the term closes, I generally try to give at least a week and a half before the report cards go out, and then I try to give weekends, because I read every report card before it goes home, so I need a couple days to read, so it's, you know, we are kind of playing, so the term ends, is it on here?
I don't know that we put.
Yeah, we didn't put the terms.
We can have them, but we didn't.
Need another color.
That's the problem. I said to Nancy, "We're gonna have to make the key longer," and, you know. I mean, that's the problem, we had, the other one, remember, we had that whole page, and it was all the tiny little details, and the codes on it, we're trying to put the essential stuff in the middle.
It was December thirteenth this year.
Just one more comment about that, because teachers also like to have the report cards go home before the conference.
Oh, right, so they can discuss the report card?
Yeah.
So we don't.
I have these one of them in November, when my kids went to Pembroke, they were November.
Yes, they used.
But then we had four terms.
Oh, that's right. That's right, that's right. We went to the trimester, that changed that a little bit.
The only thing that I want to point out is there are a couple of school committee meetings that fall on events at the school, like on the thirteenth of September.
I know.
It's the Pembroke Open House.
I know.
And then we have, um, there's a middle school conflict, too, on the March conferences.
So we, so we can definitely change that, it just means we've just gone with the second and the fourth, because it's consistent for the public, and we have had some, and the other thing we were trying to avoid, if we could, is not having a lot of two, two-week-in-a-row meetings, because those are hard for all of us.
I'd prefer a two-week-in-a-row than missing, because I usually do the conferences for my kids, so I'm there in the afternoon and at night.
So which, so help me, Barbie, which one, where are you, what month are you talking about?
Well, so Pembroke is the thirteenth of September.
This is open house, right.
So it would be you guys I'd be concerned with. But is that only in the afternoon?
Again, you can schedule those at different times, like.
No, that's the open house.
Oh, that's the open house.
Well, that's the open house.
Okay.
Yeah, that is at night, that would be a conflict.
And that's.
That would be.
Although, although, it depends on which grade levels.
Oh, right.
Mm-hmm.
So could you schedule?
Could you put the little grades on the first night, Margaret? She usually does do that, she usually puts the littler kids in the first night.
So then March fourteenth is conferences in the afternoon and evening for elementary?
Yeah, I could work around that.
That's, that's what I thought people could work around it, because.
And then, um, and I just want to make sure that we don't, um, book, like, concerts, school committee meetings, so that would be, so this is set, once this is approved, then I would expect the schools to.
Yeah, make adjustments, yeah.
Right, I would agree with that, because last year, I think we, we approved three different calendars.
We did, we did.
Our goal was to come back to that this year. So if that.
Well, just the other issue in September was, um, Marsha Shaw.
Yeah.
Right, that's right, like, for the open houses, so we really, when we were discussing the open houses, we got kind of, again, jammed in.
Well, look how early the middle high school was.
Not having them too late.
The first week of school, I mean, that's not, we've never done that before, but again, to the point of, you know, how many days off we have, right? And we were trying to, everybody wanted the weeks of the eleventh or the eighteenth, right? But you can see what happens those weeks. It's not easy, it's like a juggling match, right?
And, you know, I do not like half-day PDs, I just don't.
I love them, they're my favorite. Thanks, Colin.
I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure that I think it's sincere about them.
I just don't like them as a, as a parent, because I just feel like the children, I know Peter was here, he would say, but I just don't know how effective that day is for the children.
See, I disagree, because I, we do have days as a teacher, and we do get a lot of instruction in.
I can speak only from a kindergartner, um, I feel like I'm prefacing that a lot. Not much happens on those half-days. Um, and I know in some cases, they've been, been community gatherings as well, which also takes, so it's, it's, it's taking an awkward day, and already making it more awkward, and, yeah.
Kindergarten used to be all half-days.
Margaret, what can you say to that for Pembroke?
Well, I mean, I can't.
You don't want to overprogram kids.
I do understand that, but I feel like the, the community gatherings, that is a part of the instruction, I mean, that's, you know, that's a time we, you know, so I won't get into that.
Yeah, no, and, and I'm not disagreeing.
But for, it's, it's definitely true that kindergarten and grade one have their specials in the morning, um, but again, that's instruction also, so, um, you know, I, noon dismissal to me feels like that's okay, I mean, I, again, some schools get out even earlier for early release, so I feel like we do pretty, pretty well having the noon, um, but, and I do think the half-day is valuable for PD, um, when we're working in grade levels or small groups, so even though, you know, it, it might feel like that's not the best use of time, I think for what we plan on those days, it is a good, it's, it's good time, and that's another reason why it is important to have them kind of throughout the year, because they are check-ins, and they are a chance for people to work together, so, I mean, I thoroughly understand as, as a parent also, you know, it's, you know, on the other hand, I've got the early release, but hey, you have an early release.
Well, some districts have an early release every week.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, they do, and new ones.
We're not discussing.
Hamilton one, or Manchester Essex does that, or Hamilton one and one of them, yeah. I think the other thing we tried to do, um, was be consider, you know, we did the, you know, before or after a holiday, but then even the half-days, if I'm remembering what we did, we, we had them on Fridays instead of Wednesdays in the middle of the week.
You did.
Because we thought that might be easier for parents to plan on that.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I think that's a good idea, especially for, like, college visits and things like that.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Because we know they're disruptive, so making them disruptive on Friday felt like it was easier for parents to make arrangements than disruptive on Wednesday.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And Colin, can you speak to me about the, um, the front-loaded versus the back-loaded versus the, you know, I know you've probably looked at all different ways.
Yeah, and, and, part of it was, we, we, we kind of, we were almost painted into a corner with the, so we know we have the day, the full day when we get back from, uh, from summer break, um, we knew that the sixth of November needed to be a full day because it was Election Day, um, and we wanted to have a full day somewhere in the middle there, so we could do those check-ins, or bring in a presenter, um, for the early part of the year, so we can kick off any initiatives, we've talked a little bit about what the PD calendar would look like for next year, which I'm sure I'll present to you all at another time when it's more formalized.
And it will include technology, too, right?
Yeah, and that, that's a, a big part of, of the PD calendar, um, so that, that full day on the fifth would be to bring in guest presenters, or, uh, any contractual services to come in to do some presentations, and then to, to Michael's point, we wanted to have some consistency of five-week instructional weeks, so that's when we then get into the half-days starting, uh, in February, and we talked about that being more of the, you know, teachers working in grade levels, or vertical teams, or content areas, or whatever that shakes out to be, which leaves the last full day in March.
The fat, uh, oh.
So the full days are front-loaded, kind of out of necessity, because we need to have one when we get back, we need to have one for Election Day, we wanted to have one to really get initiatives up and rolling in October, and then they're spread out for the remainder of the year.
So there's four full days.
Four full days and four half-days.
Four half-days. So, in the grand scheme of things.
It could be twelve half-days.
It could be twelve half-days, but that's not necessarily easier for families, right?
Oh, no, I.
You think half-days are easier than full days?
Oh, no, I hate that.
I thought you just said you love them.
No.
He was kidding.
I know he was kidding.
So I said I doubt your sincerity.
I mean, when you think about four half-days, but, I mean, we have half-days for other reasons.
That's the problem, right? That's the, when you start looking at it, then it's the.
We can tell by now on the column notes, okay.
And then the graduation day has to be the.
Yeah, I, I wish Peter was here, because he explains about the number of days that you have to, twelve days before graduation or something, needs to be the last day for seniors, so when he counted it all up, it doesn't, the first, the first Saturday doesn't work, so the eighth is later than we typically have it, usually, it's, but.
It's the third, yeah.
But.
Yeah, it's been like around the third or the fourth.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And then starting after Labor Day also, you know, kind of pushes that back.
I think we beat a dead horse with the, with the, um, PD. I appreciate though, I know, I know it's hard. You have only so much to work with. So, don't feel like we're being, we're picking on you.
I don't know.
No, we all, we all have broad shoulders.
We're required to provide the professional development.
Right.
Absolutely.
So, yeah. It's to be done somehow.
And, you know, at one point, somebody, we had asked, you know, well, what if we were to, you know, put it before? But then we have to go back and negotiate with the staff because now you're making the work year longer.
Well, we are in negotiations right now.
Go for it.
Can add it, just add something else.
Sure. We're frugal with our funds, right? You know, we're trying to get the most out of them that we can.
Yes, we're.
So, um-
Physically conservative.
So, is, is there anything else you want us to take a look at or move around or, or, no, I don't know. I mean, you know, we, you don't have to approve it tonight. We, I don't think-
When are we planning?
Well, any, anytime you're ready to, and the parents appreciate it, right? If we can, if we can publicize it, many people still are already asking, you know, when's the calendar going to be done, when's the calendar going to be done? But, you know, there have been much, times when March is when we got the calendar out, so.
I know. Well, how do you, how do you feel? Do you want to take a look at it again or are you?
I think the only, before we go, the, is it worth putting the budget? I know we don't know exactly the count, the, the budget calendar, but putting in the budget public hearing. Because that is another meeting.
We can certainly, well, let's see, let's look at the cali, let's look at the calendar here. So-
So you can do it on the second, for the second one in February?
Right, so the schedule-
So it'd be like seven and, have the regular meetings be seven and 28 and public hearing?
Well, don't, don't we usually do it just before the school committee?
Oh, is that because the 14th is your birthday?
Yeah, because I want to have that public hearing. That's exactly what I'm hoping for.
Everybody now will know that Michael's a February 14th birthday.
This year, it was supposed to be before the school committee meeting, but we didn't get it into the paper.
Correct.
Well, if we end up getting, if we end up getting the budget adopted, like, let's say, March 14th.
Right.
Right? Then you could have the public hearing before the bu, before the meeting on February 28th. If, if you wanted the initial superintendent's budget on the four, are you going to come to the meeting on the 14th?
No, I am. No, but, no, no, have we been doing public hearings?
If he's still voted in, oh, that's right.
Wow, this is a tough question. Have we been doing public hearings as their own meeting or as?
No, we usually do it for a, a, a time before a meeting. So if we did the initial presentation of the superintendent's recommended budget on the 14th, and then on the 28th, you have like what you're doing, good to do tonight, the deliberations, you could have the public hearing before the meeting on the 28th, have your discussion and then adopt on the 14th.
But do we just want to allow ourselves the flexibility and not put it on the calendar, like?
The FinCon might get a little anxious about us not adopting until the 14th. Because that makes them, that makes them have to wait for us.
Want to change it to the 13th? See if the 13th is available?
13th of-
February? Is it the 14th?
So you'd have a separate meeting?
No, I'm saying just change the school committee meeting from the 14th to the 13th.
So now when you all have a birthday, if it falls on the committee, the precedent will be set. If you're willing to make the-
Birthday off for everybody.
And then your kids' birthdays and-
That's right, I can't come because it's my son's birthday.
My dog's having a birthday.
My dog having a birthday. Totally up to you guys.
Maybe it makes sense to leave it off in there.
All right.
I like that, I like that idea though.
What, having his birthday off?
No. Oh. Yes, putting it on the 13th.
I'm fine with the calendar as it is.
What do you guys think about the calendar? Are you fine with approving it tonight? Or do you need a?
Looking at last year, and I want to say the year before, when we did vote more than once on the calendar because we realized something came up, that we miscounted it or whatever it was, is it worth giving it the two weeks to sort of vet it and then actually approve it next meeting so that-
We have, we have no prob, we have no problem with that. I mean, I, I, well, we've counted it, I mean, I, I don't know what would change in two weeks, but if everybody wants to take another look.
Well, last year, I'm trying to think of what the different things that came up.
Laura had the wrong codes. That's, every single time it was the wrong code. It was, oh, this should have been a full day. This, this should have had an asterisk. This didn't have an asterisk. It really wasn't the contents of it. It was more the format of the calendar.
It was, uh, Marsha Shana and, um, the same night.
Oh, right, we did, right, we did have to, we did have to move that.
Well, we decided on the half-day for Yom Kippur.
We did, yeah. So you had a few changes like that, but with less content as much as it was editing.
Okay.
But I do like this new format. I think it, I think parents will like it as well.
Okay, so do we want to wait or do we want to take a vote?
Do you?
Let's go.
Okay, fine. So everyone's good with the beginning of the school, the school, so it's starting, um, after Labor Day?
Yes.
Uh, so I'll, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, to approve the 2018-2019 school year as presented. School year calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It looks great. Nancy, thank you. Beautiful.
Didn't throw Nancy off at all.
Great. So, we have some donations.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have an anonymous, um, donation for, um, school lunch. So I will make an, uh, a motion to accept the anonymous donation in the amount of $25 that will go towards, um, the accounts set up for students that, um, are in arrears. Uh, that's a very generous donation, so thank you very much.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So nice these community members come out and do that. Uh, and then we have another, um, very generous donation, another anonymous donation in the amount of $1,500 that would go towards the drama program. Wonderful.
That's amazing.
So make a motion to accept that, uh, anonymous donation in the amount of $1,500 with much appreciation for the drama program.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's great. Very nice.
That's really great.
And, uh, are we going to discuss the budget?
Yeah, that was the hope.
I mean, unless, I mean, you're, the, the schedule calls for the budget to be adopted at the meeting on the 8th.
Correct.
So if, if there's discussion, maybe this would be your time to do it.
There's not a whole lot to discuss.
I know.
Did Red want that to be in this, the?
I, I think he was-
Like for future?
I think that's what, I think he thought the future, but he just wants to, he, he would thinks it's a recommendation is that it be broken out, but if he sends us an email, which sounds like he's going to, we'll answer his questions.
Essentially wants technology to be its own cost center, so the tech integration would be in there. Everything tech-based would be in there, which-
It's, it's not hard to move it. But we should, we should lay it out first.
Just some journal entries.
So Carol, it looks like, um-
Where are you, Suzanne?
I have no idea where I am.
Well, which tab are you in? Or are you in my letter?
I see D, D.
Tab D, okay.
And then if you go where the, the heading says Tab I Georgetown Middle High School Joint.
Okay.
You have it listed as one middle high school assistant principal and one middle high school assistant principal.
Yeah.
So is one middle, is one middle and one high school or like, how is that?
One slash joint AD, I think, doesn't it say one slash?
Right, but is-
Which line are you talking, I'm just trying to find it.
Sorry, Tab I.
I, I'm in Tab I.
Okay, so go down to, it's the first, it's the first one. The current principal is retiring, blah, blah, blah. And then it says there's one middle high school.
She's in a different place.
She's looking under Tab D.
D, that's why.
Yeah.
Got it. And now you want to talk about this Tab I and this one?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, you don't have two middle high schools? One is for the middle high school and one's for the high school? I mean, why do you have two, why do you have two assistant principals?
Because that's how we envision it.
So you have two little school principals?
So wait a second, let's just read, one middle high school principal, which is Peter. One middle high school assistant principal, full-time. And then one middle high school assistant principal slash athletic director.
Should that be George now?
No, no, that is what it should be. Heidi, you know, I think you're talking about like Heidi does mostly the middle school and Guy does mostly the high school. But because Guy's doing the AD, Heidi has high school responsibilities as well. So it is a middle school assistant principal.
So we have two assistant principals.
No.
Yes.
We have one assistant principal.
One and a half.
And then, that's right, thank you. It's one, one and a half.
So does Heidi now deal with, with the high school too?
She does. She does. Well, she has to because, you know, like, for example, they, she and Peter develop, just do one piece of it, evaluations. So she, Guy's not doing a lot of evaluations. But Peter and Heidi are, along with the department heads, but the department heads observe and kind of supervise, but they don't evaluate. They don't do formatives and mid-cycles, you know, they do formatives, they don't do mid-cycles and summatives. Those have to be done by the administrators. And Chris Aldoni also does some special ed evaluations, so they divide it up. But, um, there are high school teachers that, you know, Heidi is involved in working with. And then, you know, sometimes when something comes up at the high school around discipline or something that they have to do, you know, it's not unusual for Heidi to be called up to help with that because it ha, you have to have an administrator that can, can do it. So it's one and a half is really the right answer.
So the same model that it currently is.
Correct.
And then, I know we talked about like Ryan because he's half assistant A, you know, assistant AD and then he does the, um, the grounds.
Rounds.
And we all agreed that another year would be great because he-
We did.
So, uh, but in the future, we are going to look to have-
We have to always look at the model. We'll have a new principal, you know? He might have some ideas or some thoughts.
Right, but to move, you know, to just one AD, like a full-time AD versus like a halftime AD with an assistant. That's our-
Well, I think that would be great. It's just, it's the, it's the delicate balance, right? So, right now, if we continue with the model of the AP slash AD, in other words, it's hard to find a halftime assistant principal.
Oh, absolutely.
Right? So, in our model, if there are going to be two bodies, somebody has to do something halftime. Right? So, in our model, the-
But I just don't know why we need two assistant principals when we've reduced the school. It used to be six, seven, eight, now it's just seven, eight. So that's how I'm just looking at it.
As I said, I, I think, again, I'd like to have the new principal look at it, but, you know, when I, when I look at how they divide the responsibilities up and just that whole evaluation process alone has become a bear, right? The middle school is a different animal than the high school. I think if we had a, we talked about it at one meeting, if we had a junior high school, middle ju, middle, a junior, middle, junior, senior high school, you know, you might be able to do a different administrative model because you're not, you don't have a middle school model. So you're not worried about the teams and all this. If you're organized around academic departments and grades as opposed to that. So part of the issue is as long as we want to maintain the middle school model, it does require a slightly different model than it would be in a typical school of 647 through 12, 645 student school. Right? That's, that's the challenge, right? You, you do have to give some, you know, some time to the middle school. You know, it's a little different. And that's, that's really why we've maintained that model.
I do think we should start maybe looking at the, I know with budget and finance, we talked about that. Looking at the middle, uh, at the junior high school model, just, yeah, junior, senior high school model, just to see.
Yeah, you know, we, we would really, really stu, you'd need to study that community wide because that, people would have to really be on board with doing that. Because we also would have to look at how that impacts the, the teach, the teaching staff, right? Um, how it impacts the schedule, right? So there's, there's a lot of nuances to it, but I don't have a problem if we, we look and study it, you know, and-
Right, but I think some attention-
And it's what the mo, and it's what the motto, and it's, well, that's-
Maybe changing the model.
That's what I hear over and over is that, you know, the middle school is the place where people want to see the improvement. So the challenge is if you take an administrator away or we cut the other half of the administrator, now you, I, I can tell you, when I was in Quabog, I had a, I had a middle high school. The middle school always feels like the forgotten child. It just, it's just the way they feel. And so, you know, we've tried to, there are things that go well at the middle school here and there are things that we, you know, we all continue to need to change. But that is where I hear the, the greatest concerns. So I, I think we have to beef that up before we take it away, right? Or, as Barbie said, study and look at a change in model. But you really want to engage people in that. You really want to look at the research on it. You want to look at places that are doing it. I, when I, when I looked at that several years, a couple of years ago with Peter, I like, actually couldn't find any schools anymore that have like a junior, senior high model. But what I did see is sometimes they're, the way they operate seems more like a junior, senior high school in terms of how they organize their courses. But they don't call themselves a junior, a junior high school. They call themselves a middle school. But it, you know, and we have the unique challenges of sharing staff, you know, sharing schedules, you know? Because as Peter always says, we're too small and we're too big, right? So we're sort of at that awkward place, you know, so. But yeah, we can certainly look at that. For, but for this model, that's, that's the explanation for your question, Suzanne.
I just had a question under L.
L.
Um, buildings and ground maintenance. And in the last column-
The percent increase?
The percent, um, they were divided by zero.
It was, it was just zero, we kept zero. It just didn't change.
Okay. So, so it should just be zero?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
I, I have a question around the enrollment.
Okay.
Um, so that's Tab Q.
Q.
And I see here the one, uh, 1,443. But I thought that was, I had some initial numbers for this year's, yeah, for this year's, um, class, uh, classes. And then I had a revised, a set of revised numbers. And I'm wondering if this is the original or the revised.
Is this the page you're looking at, Pam? Yes. Well, this is the October 1 numbers. So when we submitted the October 1, you know, we collected the counts from the schools.
Right.
And ran, ran the report from the Student Information Management Program.
Right.
These are the bodies in the seats in October, on October 1.
Because I just have a different set of numbers totaling up to 1,459 with 127 in pre, pre-K?
Those might include like out of district. I don't know where you go. Where did you get those?
Well, I don't remember. I got them quite a while ago, but I thought they were the revised numbers, but maybe not.
So, so what I have to, and I will check with Barry on this, what, there, there's Report 3 and Report 5. One of them includes choice students and preschool students. The other one does not. So I have to find out, I'll find out for you what, what 5 actually is, whether it's-
Well, this one says this report includes total enrollment, including school choice students.
Oh, wait, it says it right there? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, so, you know, like, for instance, so the, so it's 40-
It says based on Report 5.
So 1443 is the number here, Pam.
Right, and I have 1459.
Would you have a date on that one?
Yeah, so-
Well, I, I thought mine was the revised, the, the latest.
It might be, but you, you know, when October 1 came around, some kids might have left, might have moved, might have, right? And enrollment is a, enrollment is a-
Obviously something that-
I mean, Margaret can tell you, some years she might lose 30 kids.
Right.
And get them.
It's not static. It, it changes all the time, yeah, so.
But 1443 is the number we're, that we use.
That we used. Okay. I, I'm just thinking it's probably more like 1449, but okay.
Maybe.
I, maybe.
We're just going with the, the bodies that were there October 1.
So I, I do have some questions.
Okay.
Um, I'm wondering, and you might have said this already, but do you know what Chapter 70 funding is projected to be this year? Do you have the latest news from the Hill?
It's actually in the, um-
Yes, there is a, there is a cherry sheet that is out.
And is it like?
It's, it's-
Mike Farrell told us it was about $60,000 more.
Okay. Well, that's-
It's on the revenue chart.
Okay, that's, that's, better than less.
No, that's what we said, it's not less.
Right.
But it's not more.
But that was-
But in terms of-
Chapter 70 and something else. Because Chapter 70 wasn't 60, it was like-
Was it, was it the, uh?
Really 25. That was his total cherry sheet.
That's what he said.
Was the 60,000.
Right, so Town side and school side.
Yes.
Right. Because I think Chapter, Chapter 70 was like-
It was only like 25,000.
20 or 25, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I thought he said, so I remember the figure 60.
That also included the town, the general town support.
So if you look at the, under D, under revenue sources?
Yes.
The Chapter 70 for the school is listed under the town contribution.
Oh, okay, on D. Okay, great, thank you, thank you. Um, then I was wondering, did we, we talked about increasing the, last year, the rates for extended day enrichment and preschool by 5%?
We did do that.
We did, we did that, okay.
Or for this year.
Okay. Um, then I was wondering if you had, I know they're in here somewhere, but the three baseline numbers that the Finance Committee always asks for?
They always ask for salaries, non-salaries and special education.
And I, I came up with what I perceive, think they are, but I was just wondering if you could confirm that.
Under Tab D again, if you look in the back, there's a, um, summary. It's not the back.
Isn't it right after the?
Is that after the chart, the pie chart?
Is that after the pie chart?
Oh, yes, this is this extremely, this is very useful.
Is it after or is it before it? Hold on.
Okay.
The very last sheet, I believe.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
And it breaks out the salaries and the non-salaried. And then, uh, special education's at the bottom.
You see, Pam? Right, wait a minute, okay.
The top section is the complete summary.
So the salaries is the second box.
Operations, right, 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 12.
Four point, 4.69%.
Oh, she wants the number, I think.
I know, she's, she knows, she's in the same place, yeah, she's in the right place.
Okay, all right. Okay.
And then, and then, and then the operations is the following box.
Right, and so that's what they call expenses? Non-salaries?
And then special ed is the bottom box.
Okay, so these are the three numbers that I'm circling right here. Okay, very good. Thank you. And let's see, and then I was just wondering, how are long-term sub-line?
Underfunded.
What regular subs has been doing?
They're underfunded.
It's underfunded and it's troublesome as always.
I mean, we, we look at three-year, you know, three-year spending. I mean, you know, if we, if we budget 60,000, you know, in some cases it's, it's been 90,000.
Right.
Right? I mean, it's just a very hard...
We reduced it last year, but...
Yeah.
And we just used the same figures this year.
Okay. Oh, we did.
Same budget figures.
Okay.
Last year.
It's the old one, it's the same situation.
Okay. Same as last year.
So ultimately, we're like robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Right, that's right.
Right. It, it is 90,000, you know, right?
Right.
But that happens in a lot of categories.
And the more money you, the challenge is the more money you lock up in subs today is the less money you have for teachers. Or if you cut that, then you have to find it, like it's, yeah.
Yeah, if your budget isn't as lean and tight as ours, then yeah, then you obviously, you know, take a risk with that. But if you, if you know you're likely to get certain percentage increase, right, you want to put it into the classroom instead of in a line. Because if that line goes over, then you're, you're hoping you can, you know, you might be able to find the money if something came in less expensive than we anticipated or if there was a change. Because you have to pay it, right? But at the same time, you know, like Michael said, I mean, that's a great explanation, you know, we, things that, we'd love to put it there, but it's tying up money that then would have to be cut from some other place.
Right. I, I did get these three numbers right, I just confused myself because I bolded the wrong number. Got it, okay.
It's okay.
I think it is worth, given the state of the, the preschool, the preschool and the after-school enrichment extended day, I think it is worth exploring a modest price increase to keep up with.
Yeah, you had mentioned, and I had actually mentioned that to the preschool teachers because I have been going to the, the different schools and talking and just giving them a little summary of what we're talking about with the budget. So I remember the preschool teachers the other day, this week, earlier this week. And, you know, we talked about that preschool revolving account, you know, we talked about enrollment and how unfortunately things were dependent on it. And, you know, we did, we did talk about, you know, the, the reality of, you know, if, what, what would happen if we said, you know, every couple of years or every year, since we know that there's a 2% increase in the cost in that program, you know, what if we said, what would it cost then to basically say to the, to the families, you know, so every year, you know, it'll increase? Like what would that mean for a family? Like how much more would it actually end up being? And then you have to pay attention to what's the tipping point? Like at, at what point do people say, well, you're now too expensive for us, you know? You know, and we talked about extended day, because there's 40 families that take advantage of extended day. So if we said we're not offering extended day, then probably, you know, those families would not be able to keep their kids in our program. I mean, right now, we're in that, back a few years ago, that was the deciding point. Exactly. So, I mean, we're, you know, we're, you know, we're trying to provide the best for our families in terms of what they need. It's a long day for little ones. But we also talked about the fact that if we didn't get, if the enrollment ended up being 85 kids, then we, we might have to make some decisions about some reductions because we don't have the ability to move them back into the budget. So, you know, everybody understood that, you know, so they think they're, they're like, we're going to, we're going to, you know, really try to step up our, you know, publicity. And they do think that they'll have a really pretty good solid number, idea of numbers in March, because after the lottery, they said they, they tend to get, is that right, Margaret? They tend to get more, more people. But right now, it's in the order of like 88 kids, you know? And, but they did say there's more people registering for five full days than there's been in the couple, the last couple of years. So it's, it's a numbers game, but it's also a revenue game, right? So we just have to, you know, stay on top of that. But if we were going to do that, we'd, you'd have to take a vote to do that.
What is the window? Because we have, if people are signing up for the lottery, it's also awkward to say, you know, sign up for the lottery, it's, and I don't know the number off the top of my head, you know, it's a thousand a month. Hey, you're in, by the way, it's 1250. Not that we're going with that number, but like, changing that number.
So what have we talked, talked to parents about in terms of...
Well, I think our brochure says prices may change.
That's right, it does, we did talk about that.
So if, if you were to vote an increase, then on the lottery, that's the price. Then there's the price of our program and parents would have to decide based on that.
When's the letter? When is that happening? March?
No, there is a date.
Is it mid-March?
It's mid-March.
Okay. So it's realistically, it just needs to be done before.
So you could do, you could talk about that on March 8?
Realistically, it just needs to be done before that lottery day.
Right, it's, it is the 14th, Wednesday, the 14th.
So we also don't have another, I was talking to Nancy about this, I don't think we have a Budget and Finance Subcommittee meeting scheduled. I think we had some booked in, but then we're, now we're done with that. So maybe we should try to get a time and then talk, that can be one of the discussion items, so we can maybe have a proposal for the committee on the 8th if we want to look at that.
Now, is there, is there a rule or law as to how many typical students for a student on IP in preschool?
Yes, it is.
Jack, you want to talk to that?
You have to have one more typical than you do special education.
Okay. So like a two-to-one ratio?
No, not a two-to-one ratio, so it's fifty-one to fifty.
Right.
Right. Which is weird because it's not a ratio.
Let's say we have an integrated classroom. What Jack is saying is if you're going to, if you're going to create that integrated classroom for those special ed, seven special ed kids, you have to have eight typical kids in that classroom. Things are in the classroom.
In the classroom.
So things are a little unique in Georgetown because in many districts, they just run an integrated program for the children in their town that qualify. Georgetown, we run a preschool program for the town and then we integrate our special education students into that program. Is that fair, fair to say? So we don't have a typical, like, program where we say, okay, we need one classroom of 15 kids and...
Well, I'll just jump in. They do that, but then they'll often either, the budget carries that, so children that come in, sometimes they're free or it's at a reduced rate. Because when you do have a small classroom, many parents would prefer to have more children in the class. So you have to offer an incentive if you're only going to have that many children.
Yeah.
So...
Our preschools are unique because a lot of districts have one preschool class and your choices are Monday, Wednesday, Friday morning, or Tuesday, Thursday morning, or Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday afternoon.
Right. That we offer. Well, it used to be that people could take one day or, you know, never, you could, if your work schedule was Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, you could send your child on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
But then you just have to have that particular teacher that...
Yeah, the, the teachers really had a hard time with that, you can imagine, because if you're trying to run a continuous curriculum and you've got, you know, different kids, different days, you know, trying to keep up with that is a little tricky.
Donna Donahue always had different kids, different days. But Mrs. Chick, she always had this...
She had the full-day program.
No, well, she had the half-day.
Oh, she did, okay.
But then it was when you had her Tuesday, Thursday, the next year you went Monday, Wednesday, Friday. But it was all the same kids, like they...
I see. Yeah, so we are, we are very unique in terms of the program that we run. Okay, so we can definitely talk about that at the Budget and Finance and, and when was the last time we, we did extended day? We increased extended day last year, didn't we?
Yeah. So the thing with that is if we're going to have a meeting, but then look to March 8 to actually put forward a price, we should meet. It's not much time because then we won't have to...
Yeah, we have to just meet the week after vacation. Because, because the week after vacation is the 26th through March 2nd. So we, we could meet.
You still think that's enough time?
I think that's enough time. I think we could meet and then, and then the following, we just have to ready for the packet for like Monday or Tuesday the next week. Right, so we have to just project, do little projections and figure out like what...
I was just wondering, like in terms of like what their market looks like out there, like, are we going to come to the meeting then?
Well, Amanda might, Amanda might know that, like what the, you know, what other places around are...
I need to recall, did one, I think one of the area teachers raised their rates? I don't think I imagine that, I think that's what she...
Well, I think...
That's not been worked out yet.
Or was it you had? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it was a little surprising.
I know. Well, preschool is expen, preschool is expensive. I mean, you know, the, the teachers are, you know, hoping, you know, they want, they